Welcome everyone to this meeting of the Dennison City Council for Monday, May the 5th, 2025. We are very pleased to have Reverend Alton Blachly, pastor of Mount Olive Baptist Church. If you would please come forward and offer our invitation, please.
Let us pray. You're God our Father, we come before you right now in the name of Jesus Christ, thanking you for this day. For heavenly Father, we know that this is a day that you've made, and we're rejoicing and glad in it. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this council. Heavenly Father, we thank you for these men and women, heavenly Father, who give of themselves, heavenly Father. And heavenly Father, we pray in the name of Jesus Christ, you continue to bless them, heavenly Father, with the knowledge wisdom, understand they need to continue to drive us forward, heavenly Father, as a community. Heavenly Father, I pray in the name of Jesus Christ, that whatever is said here is done, heavenly Father, in love, heavenly Father, in unity, heavenly Father, even if contention comes, heavenly Father, every now and then, heavenly Father, we know it comes, heavenly Father, but we still have the unity of love and peace, knowing that each and every individual wants what is best for our city. Now heavenly Father, I pray in the name of Jesus Christ, you just continue to lead our mayor, guide him, heavenly Father, that he may be able, heavenly Father, to lead and guide those who set up under him, heavenly Father, and will be ever so careful and mindful, to give you all the praise and honor and glory, for us in the name of Christ, we pray. Amen.
And Ms. Emily Agans, if you'd come forward, the Director of Communications and Marketing for the city, and we look forward to your offering our praise.
Please, Georgie, in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
On our Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas one state, under God, one indivisible.
At this time, we're at item number 2A, and I'd like to give you a little background on the Certified Municipal Clerk Designation. It's a prestigious and globally recognized certification designed to enhance the professional development and recognition of municipal clerks. Offered by the International Institute of Municipal Clerks, this program promotes continued education and skill building in municipal governance, record-keeping, elections, and public service, among other things. The CMC certification demonstrates a municipal clerk's commitment to excellence in their role, their professional integrity, and dedication to ongoing learning. It aims to prepare municipal clerks to meet the challenges of the complex role while providing them with quality education. To earn the CMC designation, a municipal clerk must attend extensive education programs, and it also requires pertinent experience within a municipality. In Texas, there are over 1,200 municipalities, but there are only 93 certified municipal clerks, and we happen to have one. So at this time, it's my pleasure to invite Chris Wellington to meet me at the front, and we're going to present an International Institute of Municipal Clerks upon Ms. Christine Wellington, CMC. And it reads, hereby convenes the title of Certified Municipal Clerk upon Christine Wellington, CMC, who has completed the requirements prescribed by the International Institute of Municipal Clerks for certification, certified this 28th day of March 2025. Congratulations.
Chris, the cape and tiara come later.
Okay, next on the agenda is item number three, and it's receive a report, hold a discussion, and take action on administering oaths of office statements for officers and delivering certificates of election to unopposed duly-elected officials for place four and place six, and that's Councilman Redwine and Mayor Pro Tem Teresa Adams. So if you would like to move down to the podium, you could, to be, get sworn in.
Done this enough. All right, can y'all see them? Maybe turn the face out. Okay, if you'll raise your right hand and repeat after me, I state your name. Do solemnly swear that I will faithfully execute the duties of the office as a councilmember of the City of Dennison, Texas, and will, to the best of my ability, preserve, protect, and defend the Constitution and laws of the United States and of the states who help me God.
Next item on the agenda is item number 3B, receive a report, hold a discussion, and take action on appointing a mayor pro tem to serve for a one-year term. Gentlemen, I'd ask your consideration to consider Teresa Adams for mayor pro tem. She's the only one of us that has seven years of service on this city council, so I think she's highly qualified.
Mr. Mayor, I move that Mayor Pro Tem Teresa Adams continue in her current role for the ensuing year.
A second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Yes, sir.
All in favor, say aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem, for serving one more year. We appreciate that. Item four on the agenda, public comments. Citizens may speak on action items listed on the agenda. A request to speak card should be completed in return to the city clerk upon arrival and prior to the council reaching the public comment section of the agenda. Citizens' comments are limited to three minutes unless otherwise required by law. Comments related to public hearings listed below, if any, will be heard when the specific hearing starts. Madam Clerk?
No.
No cards. Okay, we'll move forward. Number five is the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Have a motion by Councilman Redwine and a second by Councilman Massey. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Number six, public hearings. We have three public hearings this evening. Item 6A deals with 323 East Chestnut. And Ms. Diane York, if you'd come up and tell us about the .21 acre tract.
Yes, sir. Good evening, Mayor and Council. The first item I have for you is a request to rezone the subject property commonly known as 323 East Chestnut from both the light industrial and multifamily one zoning districts to the single-family five or SF5 zoning district to accommodate a, the construction of a single-family dwelling. As you can see, the property is split-zoned. You can kind of see from here, I don't think the zoning or the survey is a part of this presentation, but where you see the multifamily strip, these are actually three individually plotted lots, about 25 feet apiece. So I'm not sure why that one was singled out, but based off of how it's platted, it's possible that the light industrial came in after the multifamily. Regardless, the applicant is seeking to rezone the property to build a single-family home. It's adjacent, the property is adjacent to single-family five, and the future land use plan does designate this area as to be developed in a neighborhood manner. There are neighborhood or single-family dwelling units to the north, to the east, and some to the south. There are some non-residential uses to the west, but given the future land use plan designation, as well as the adjacency to the requested zoning district, staff does recommend approval of the request. The Planning and Zoning Commission also recommended approval of their request at their meeting on April 22nd, and I'm present for any questions that you may have. I do not believe the applicant is here.
Any questions for Ms. York? This is a public hearing. We'll declare the hearing open at this time. Is there anyone to speak in favor of or against this item for number 6A on the agenda? If not, the public hearing is closed. Any other comments, questions from council? If not, is there a motion?
Mayor, I move to approve an ordinance changing the zoning of the subject property from light industrial zoning district to MF1 multifamily residential zoning district to single-family five residential zoning district to allow for construction of single-family dwelling.
Second.
There is a motion by Mayor Pro Tem Teresa Adams, a second by Councilman Thomas to approve this item. Any other discussion? All in favor, please say aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. And back for item B, Ms. York. We're going to talk about 1827 South Armstrong, please.
Yes, sir. Thank you again, Mayor. The second item I have for you tonight is a request to rezone the subject property commonly known as 1827 South Armstrong from the light industrial zoning district to the commercial zoning district. Here's an aerial view of that subject property. In March, city staff received a TABC application requesting approval for a TABC license for a bar for a structure located on the property. That you can kind of see here, it's going to be at that southwest corner for the structure. Through the review of this application, it was determined that the subject property is zone light industrial, and a bar is not an allowed use within the zoning district. I will say a bar, or the use of a bar, is not a by right use in any zoning districts, but it is only allowed within the central area, community retail, local retail, regional retail, commercial, and commercial. Based upon how the site had been developed, when we wound up meeting with the property owner and the future tenants, staff provided some guidance on how to move forward with potentially opening a bar at this, or on this property. And given how the area has developed and that it was adjacent to one of the main thoroughfares coming into the City of Dennison, it was recommended that they move forward with the commercial zoning district. And then they would also have to submit for a conditional use permit. I will say that the request for a conditional use permit is a companion item on this agenda. As you can kind of see, the property currently consists of multiple structures, one of which has an active certificate of occupancy or is in operation right now for a different use. Rezoning to the commercial zoning district will not impede, that user will not make it a non-conforming use. The future land use plan does designate this area to be developed in a mixed commercial manner. There is also a revitalization area overlay over this area. Rezoning, or approving a rezone for the subject property is compliant with the future land use plan. Staff recommends approval of the request for this reason, and so did the Planning and Zoning Commission at their meeting on April 22nd. I'm present for any questions that you may have. And the applicant is here.
Any questions?
What business is adjacent to that?
It is casting, Creative Casting.
Can you flip back to the site map?
Yes, sir.
You said southwest, the southwest in the property?
Yes, does this have a little, oh, you can't see it, it's...
I don't see a southwest on that property.
It's the, it's, so I might be, my directions may be officer. It is the building, the metal building that you can kind of see at that far corner that's brunting on Armstrong Avenue. So it's not southwest in that polygon. How about southeast? I know that word. Up is north, up is north.
That's how my niece gives driving directions. Go to that room and turn up.
I like her. So it's the little metal building that you kind of see there.
Where is the parking likely to be, and what is the size of that structure?
So I don't have an idea of what that square footage is. The applicant or the property owner may be able to tell you. I will say that the parking is a discussion within the next case. As you can kind of, I'll dig into it a little bit here. You can kind of see that it is lacking in the availability for parking, and so with the conditional use permit, the tenant is proposing to utilize the property to the south for parking. There are some additional improvements that are needed, a parking plan that is needed in order to determine if that is an appropriate area for parking, but it is a vacant parking lot. And while the ordinance does require onsite parking, we try to get a little creative with this site.
You said the property owner's here?
Yes, sir.
I am curious about the size of that particular building.
It is approximately 900 square feet.
Okay, and...
Yes, sir, okay. This is a public hearing, and we'll declare the public hearing open at this time. And if you would, could we have you come up and tell us that again, please? If you don't mind, and could you please state your name and your address for the record? Thank you.
My name is Tammy Skelter. My husband and I own the property buildings. We also own Creative Casting as well. And I'm the CFO of Creative Casting.
And the building is approximately 900 square feet?
Approximately 900 square feet. Right behind that, there's a smaller building that will be used for refrigeration, food, things like that. There's a pavilion as well as a band stage.
What do you anticipate your occupancy to be, when you guys have an event or a bar with capacity?
Our tenants or the actual ones that will have the bar, occupancy would be whatever the fire department has.
What I'm driving at is how much parking do you need for a restaurant outside of central area? And these are the data points.
The blank parking lot that is there currently is a very good friend of ours, as well as our tenant, and he has agreed to let us use that. We will mark out the parking spaces to make sure that it will meet fire code. We have also designated an area that will be for the fire department for access to all the buildings.
Excellent, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who desires to speak for or against this proposal, item 6B? If not, we'll close the public hearing. And back to council, any questions, further comments on item 6B for the public hearings? No? If not, I'll request a motion.
Mayor, I move to approve an ordinance changing the zoning of the subject property from the light industrial zoning district to the commercial zoning district.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilman Thomas and a second by Councilman Massey in favor of item 6B. Any other questions, comments? All in favor, please say aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Moving to item 6C, this is the conditional use permit for this same property. And we'll have, there you are, Ms. York.
Thank you, sir. My last item for you tonight is a request for a conditional use permit to allow for the operations of a bar for a property commonly known as 1827 South Armstrong. As I mentioned with the previous case, staff received a TABC application in March requesting approval for a TABC license for this property. It was determined that a rezoning was needed, as well as a conditional use permit, in order to move forward with the potential for a bar here. And so with the approval of the zoning, we can move forward with that conditional use permit request. So the applicant is seeking approval for a CUP to allow for the operations of Bloopers Pub. The applicant has previous experience in operating a bar, and their goal with this potential, or this potential bar, sorry, is to create a safe and comfortable environment for patrons together. They are proposing hours of operation to consist of 11:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m. daily, and they have not requested an after-hour permit from TABC. And I do not believe that they intend to, so those are the hours that they are proposing to work within. They are potentially going to provide some lighter bar food, as well as mixed cocktails and beer that you would typically see at a bar. The applicant, as I think the property owner just mentioned, they do want to utilize that pavilion outside, and they potentially want to have live music there, and all of that will stop by 10:00 p.m. in order to be mindful of their neighboring property, neighboring properties. There's really nobody around them right now, but there is some residential to the west, so we appreciate that they're wanting to be mindful, but this does, this is a pretty industrial, commercial type of area. The applicant has provided a proposed parking plan. However, after discussions with the fire marshal, the proposed driving aisles and parking spaces do not meet the fire code, nor do they meet Chapter 28 dot 50, which is our off-street parking requirements. All parking will be provided off-street, or off-site via the parking lot that's adjacent to the south, and I know that direction is correct, in order to accommodate this parking. The site does not provide for any available parking, and so in order to allow for operations to move forward, we had to, the tenants, the property owners, as well as staff, had to get a little creative. And we can place a condition allowing for that off-site parking through a conditional use permit. So if the council deems it appropriate, and we do get a solid parking plan that meets both the fire code as well as Chapter 28, it does provide them an opportunity to move forward. We did ask that a condition, as I just mentioned, be placed on the conditional use permit, requiring that parking plan be provided prior to any improvements being made. Staff, myself, the fire marshal, we do want to make sure that whatever the proposed parking is, not only does it meet the requirements, as I mentioned, but that we're not over-parking, we're not over-striping, given that this is not an actual piece of the property for the site. We want to make sure that the applicants are not expending any additional funds that are not necessary. And so prior to any improvements being made, we would like that parking plan to review and approve. Within the project narrative, the applicant does state that improvements are being made to the site to make it visibly more appealing. We did not receive a landscaping plan. We would, our staff does ask that a condition be placed on the conditional use permit, requiring a landscaping plan, because there are some sites that are available for landscaping, and we would like to work through that with the applicant in determining where is appropriate for landscaping that doesn't impede any kind of exits that are needed for the patrons, and also does not impede right-of-way. But given, as I mentioned prior in the last case, with that overlay designation of a revitalization area, we want to make sure that we're being mindful of all improvements that are necessary for the site. There was an additional condition that was placed on this site or by the Planning and Zoning Commission. They had some concerns with the potential use of that southern property, given that it's not an actual onsite, or it's not the actual property that is being utilized for the bar. So their concern was that if the applicant or the property owner does make these improvements off-site, and the potential property owner to the south sells it, says, no, you can't park here, how does that affect the actual conditional use permit? And so they asked for some form of mechanism by way of a lease, some kind of in-writing agreement stating that improvements can be made to that site, and that they are allowed to park there definitely for a period of time, something that just ties the parking allowance within the conditional use permit. If for some reason, in the future, the parking became a question of concern, we would hope that the applicant or the property owner would come to staff and say, you know, hey, we have some concerns, this may not be where we can park anymore, so that we could work through that, so that their conditional use permit isn't obsolete at that moment. And that's, it's not common. We don't have conditional use permits where we play, we allow for a condition to be placed where they can park off-site, but it is something that could happen, and just like any other conditional use permit where some conditions can't be met, landscaping of any of that sort, we would want to work with the tenant so that they don't lose their certificate of occupancy. It was a condition that the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended, so staff does ask that that be considered when, if you make your motion to approve this, that along with the two conditions listed within the staff report, that we're mindful of the commission's request as well. Given that the site is to be developed in a mixed commercial manner per the future land use plan, staff is supportive of the request with those conditions being placed on the conditional use permit, and with that third condition that I mentioned, having some kind of mechanism allowing for that parking for that southern property, the Planning and Zoning Commission was recommended approval as well. I know that's a lot, and so I'm present for any questions that you may have.
How many days a week of operation?
I bet it's in their project narrative. Oh, I don't have their project narrative. Seven, seven days a week. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry.
Any other questions? All right, thank you. This is a public hearing. We declare the hearing open. Is there anyone here to speak in favor of or against this CUP? If not, we'll close the hearing and move forward back to council. Any questions, comments? If not, is there a motion on this matter with three conditions that I recall? A parking plan prior to any improvements being made, a landscaping plan, and a lease or other mechanism to ensure that their parking to the south of that building is available to them?
Yes, sir.
Mayor, I move to recommend approval for a conditional use permit to allow for the use of a bar in the subject property with the following conditions. A parking plan is provided to staff in the strategic spaces, driving aisles that meet the parking requirements listed in Section 28 dot 50, and fire requirements, and a mechanism to secure seam, along with a landscape plan provided.
Second.
A motion by Councilman Massey, a second by Councilman Thomas to approve item C with conditions. Any other questions, comments? If not, all in favor, please say aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you. Moving to item number seven, these are some project updates. And Ms. Agans, if you'd move forward, please, and give us a little update on the quarterly budget for the Dennison Arts Council.
Yes. Good evening, Mayor, Council. As you know, the City of Dennison's Tourism Division allocates around 14% of its hotel occupancy tax revenue to the Dennison Arts Council for the purpose of promoting arts in our community. As a recipient of these funds, the Arts Council is required to provide you with a quarterly update of how this money is being utilized. I'm glad to introduce the President of the Dennison Arts Council, Cindy Salem. She will provide us with tonight's update.
Thank you, and welcome, Ms. Cindy.
Thank you very much. Hello, everybody. Oops. Am I, is the presentation up or not? Oh, good, okay. You will receive one in the email. Emily and I did try to print it, but our, both of us have a Mac, and we suspect that caused some printer problems, so you would have gotten it with big white holes on it. So anyway, thank you very much for having us. I'm going to report on the last two quarters. The dinner, the budget this year was $125,000. To date, in six months, this is the first two quarters of the fiscal year, we've received $63,000. So we're almost spot-on with the projected budget. We also did hold over $25,000 because Dia de los Muertos is a big expense and the fall show for marketing. And so that will probably again happen next year. So all we do have hold over, it's deliberate, planned to essentially have a zero budget, if you will, at the end of the day. We did break down our budget this year to the Fall Festival. That's $15,000. Our office is $20,000. This is the annual budget. Spring Festival is six. Cultural District Advertising is $30,000. So again, this year, we're putting about 20% into the advertising budget. Public art, $5,000. Performing art, $5,000. And labor, $25,000. And labor, $25,000. We are, are vending out more work, right? So now we have a storefront, we have a gallery that we have multiple shows in, we have contract labor that's coming in and helping us make that happen. We've contracted services for the website, and we've also contracted services for our social media. I think we can show that all of those things are having a positive impact on what our ultimate goal is, which is improving tourism and arts-related tourism in Dennison. Our metrics also show that. So our website actually had some really high increases. We did several things this year to try to drive more business to it. It's, well, it's labeled Dennison Arts Council. Our vision for that is the Cultural Arts District, which you know we're also the sponsor of as part of the Dennison Arts Council. So we use that kind of as one of our anchors. We've also added more types of, of content. So one of them that we're really happy with last year is a long-form blog. So long-form contact content, we found someone who's a great volunteer, and she's done long articles on Sparrow's Gallery, on Shanna Rain Studio, Cora Bryant was our first one. We've done Oliver White. So the intention is that someone could look at this website and go say, wow, those things and people are in Dennison, and those that want to can click through and read more about it. We're getting good hits on that. Then we also put that on all of our social media. So we're finding that, kind of expanding beyond just a Facebook post and trying to get something that's got a little bit more meat to it. In all cases, our year-to-date is running really pretty much right on. The one place that we're running hot on is our advertising budget. No surprise there. So we're going to start looking for some other sources of funding that can help us with, like the festivals, and get some of the TCA grants, Texas Commission of the Arts grants, to supplement it, and then we can drive even more money into the advertising. The other thing that we kept up and are working hard on is the public art. So we've created a repository, it's basically a spreadsheet, right, which we didn't really have a good one, that we can then say with a little more surety, you know, how many statues do we have, how many sculptures do we have, where are our murals, what about our banners? Those are some of the things that really help us in the long run, not just to attract tourism, but get the main, the Great American Main Street Award. So we're really proud of that, and we needed to quantify it a little bit better. And on our website is a virtual map. It's a Google map. You can actually walk around and the dots move around and you can see how close you are to your art gallery, or if you're at a mural. We just updated this a couple of months ago. Hit, and it'll say, as much as we know, who did the mural, a little bit about the artist, a little bit about the mural, right? I mean, some of these murals have a lot of meat to them, and we wanted people to be able to see that. Would it be great to have QR codes and things like that right on the murals? Yeah, but, you know, it's a little easier to make a dot on a map, so we've done that. Dia did happen during the first quarter of the fiscal year, and it was a horrible, horrible day. We spent the whole week trying to decide if we were going to have to really call the festival because it was truly bad storms. We all huddled several times on Friday and, and gave it the green light, but it was a very dreary, wet, windy day. Fortunately, we had people come out. We actually had almost the same attendance year-over-year as we did the year before. The placer report showed we had about 7,000 people downtown, which is similar to last year. They stayed about 135 minutes. I'm really proud of that, too, because I think that shows that the music's holding because they sure didn't need that much time to just go to the vendor booths and get something to eat. So I think they're staying. We noticed that, too. We are going to shift to Forest. We have to next year because obviously with the construction. So we're going to try really hard to keep those metrics going. Placer also showed us that about 40% of the people that are coming from outside Grayson County, and we really drive toward that. We spend the majority of the advertising going out to that 300-mile donut. But I will say this, we decided last fall, and tourism agreed, that rather than, a lot of times you advertise not to the local, but use these dollars to bring outside people in, we had too many new people to say that we, we don't need it. Because we now includes all these people that were them. So we're, we're doing the whole, the whole, the whole circle now. So it's not a donut anymore. We're doing the whole thing. And that's the geofencing, Facebook ads, all those things I knew nothing about, but thank goodness we've hired people that do. So they're making that all happen.
And that was, how many people from outside, 45%?
No, about 40% it looked like, on the placer data. And that was the whole downtown. But if you remember, we had the benches downtown, we had window contests. We try really hard to kind of drive it. Going to have to do a little bit more creative this year to do that, but the car show, those kind of things. So we liked, really is helpful to have that placer data and be able to compare those zip codes to see where we're getting people from. They just pulled another one for me today because we're trying to get this grant. And so we'll, we'll drill down and get more specific, but Frisco, Dallas, that area seemed to be more. We did push last year more advertising into southern Oklahoma, and Durant was like one of the top ones, too. So we count that, you know? It's good stuff. The other festival we're going to do is North Texas Arts Festival, third year in a row. We moved it to Katy this year so we could be inside and so we could do a two-day event. And really hope all of this falls into place nicely. One of our goals when we started the North Texas Arts Festival was to meet one of the goals of the Cultural Arts District, which is to attract artists from outside the area to come here, find roots here, move here. And we're using this application called Zaplication that the artist, it's a national registry. Every big festival's listed on it, and it worked. Come by and meet these people. We have them coming from some, one from Colorado, one from Louisiana, Arkansas, quite a few from Oklahoma, all over Texas. I mean, not just our little group, you're going to see a lot of new artists. So I think that's tremendously exciting. We did send them out all the, all the housing information. So we, by doing this, too, it's like, they're not going to drive three hours, set up and drive back home. So they're going to set up Friday, they have Arts Festival on Saturday, we're doing public music, performing music live outside, they're going to be painting, we're going to do the dumpsters on the other side, we have a recycling event, and they're going to bring the, they are now called Bench Beasts, but the Yarn Bombing, where they dressed up the 16 benches downtown, which in itself is a drivable thing. We know people that went to McKinney to see it. So we're excited to try to push that out and get the fiber arts people up here as well. So we think we've got a lot of things going on. We're heavily advertising that one. I got a panicked call this morning at 6:15 from my marketing person because my, the credit card quit working or Facebook did whatever they do, and the ads had stopped, and she was watching it, and so we all got up and fixed it. So anyway, so we, again, have quite a few things going on. We'll continue to push all of the activities that are going on in the area and just really appreciate the generous support. Having, knowing this money is coming in every month is a game changer for a nonprofit. We talk to other art councils that are just struggling all the time. We can make plans, we can grow, and I think the things that we're doing are really digging in and starting to see some results. At the end of it is a thank you to all my board members and the ad hocks that serve. It takes an army right now to make this all happen. So I thank you. Any questions?
What are the dates for the Texas Arts Festival?
It's going to be the 16th, I'm sorry, the 17th and 18th. It's a Saturday and Sunday, 16th is their move-in. We are going to do an artist reception, and I thought I'd send you all invitations. It's Saturday at 5:00, which is an awkward time, but it's the artist, we're going to have Stafford House do it, try to get them to mingle a little bit, give us a chance to do a little hello to them. So we'll get everybody invited to that. Hopefully getting that pushed out, but thought that'd be a nice way to hopefully meet and greet just a few people that might want to move. All right? Any other questions?
This is truly exciting, and your enthusiasm shows, and, and we can't tell you how much we appreciate the Arts Council and for everything that you do to try to help us make our downtown even more attractive and more beautiful to outsiders. So thank you so much.
You're welcome. It's been a pleasure. And having started this 20 years ago when we bought that building, this has been a lovely time to do it compared to back then. So I think we, I think I kind of hit it at the right time. So thank you, everybody.
Please relate our thanks to your entire board.
I will, thank you.
Project Updates, 7B. Ms. Alsavala, we have a report on the 26 budget and tax rate adoption schedules.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. And I'm here to talk about our budget and tax rate adoption schedule as we kick off the fiscal year 26 budget. And as you know, our budget kickoff begins in early March and ends in early September. So I'm not going to go over all the dates on the slides, the slide, but I'd like to talk about the bolded dates, which are key dates. So on June the 27th, the workshop will be held with council and staff to discuss council's goals and directors or divisions' needs. This is always a great opportunity for questions to get asked and answered and to align our needs with your goals. So on July is typically spent working on the meat of the budget, the details, and on August the 1st, the proposed budget will be filed with the city clerk's office and posted on our website. It's important to note that changes can still be made to the budget at this time up until its adoption. And then lastly, on September 2nd, the council will adopt our 2025 tax rate, which funds our fiscal year 26 budget, which will also be adopted. There's no motion needed on this agenda item. It's just a quick update on the budget schedule that's about to be happening heavily in the next couple of months. So I'm here to answer any questions if you have any.
Doesn't it seem like we just did this?
It does, it does. And I'm sorry if I don't sound as enthusiastic as the Arts Council's presentation, but...
Behind you and to your left is a wonderful mentor, so just be sure you get this. Thank you, Ms. Alsavala. Thank you. We're moving to item number eight, and there will be no action taken on this item. And the next item will be number nine, executive session. We will consult with an attorney on a matter in which the attorney's duty to the governmental body under the Texas disciplinary rules of professional conduct conflicts with this chapter, and will consult with an attorney about pending or contemplated litigation or contemplated settlement of the same, section 551 dot 071. And tonight's agenda is, number one, consult with the city attorney on a resolution of no objection for Dennison Leased Housing Associates One Limited Partnerships, an entity to be created. Application of the Texas Department of Housing and Community Affairs for the non-competitive 4% housing tax credits program for the development of Dennison Family Apartments, a 264-unit multifamily rental housing development at 1,000 Memorial Drive, and approving a cooperation agreement with Texas Housing Foundation for 1,000 Memorial Drive. The time is, I believe it says 6:43. The council will adjourn to executive session. Thank you. Put the speaker back on. Ladies and gentlemen, it's 7:06. We'll call our meeting back to order from the executive session. Let you know that there will be no action taken from the executive session. Is there any other business to come before the council, discussion council? If not, it's still, oh, it snuck into 7:07. We just got it into 7:07. The meeting's adjourned, and we'll, thank you, everybody, for hanging with us tonight. Appreciate it.